Okay, gotcha. And then you'll introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for joining us on this lovely evening for the 2024 Morris City Council Debate. I'm Riley Tolershird. I am the president of the Morris Campus Student Association, and I am joined here with Mu Tzu.
Mu Tzu Miyachi, student of third year at U of M Morris, philosophy, politics, economics major.
We're super excited to host this event for you guys tonight. And so, without too much ado, we'll begin. But first of all, I want to give you a little rundown of how things are going to go. The candidates were all sent six questions in advance. They're all going to get one minute each to answer the questions. Once that portion is done of the pre-selected questions, we will open it up to audience Q and A session. And following the audience Q and A, once all the questions are answered, then we can also just have a little open minkle session at the end. We will be creating a recording of this event, which we'll post to our YouTube channel. We're also working on live streaming the event on Facebook. YouTube was giving us a few roadblocks. So, either way, if the live stream doesn't work, we're going to have a physical recording that you can find on our YouTube channel, which we'll have on our Facebook and Instagram. So you'll have the link to that. Otherwise, you can always email us. If you're curious as to what that email is, you can look for the posters for this event. Otherwise, come contact us at the end. So, without any further ado, we'll begin the 2024 Morris City Council Debate. So I'll pass this microphone to the candidates. And we'll go ahead and start with the questions. So, first of all, let's just go ahead and go down the line. And we have one minute. Can you please briefly introduce yourself to the audience?
My name is Cam Erickson. I moved here a little over six years ago from southern Minnesota. I lived or grew up in central Minnesota in the Merdell-Widina area. Went to Freysfeldt Community College, then Mankato State University. Got a degree in elementary education and taught elementary for 13 years. Living south of Mankato, I found myself working in pork production, food service. And then eventually I went into owning my own retail businesses. When I moved here, I became the director at the Stevens County History Museum, which I did for six years until this last August, which helped me learn quite a lot about this area and meet a lot of people. And now I own Pants, etc. on Atlantic Avenue. And so I'm back in business, which is really my passion, so.
Thank you, Cam. And thank you all those who came out tonight. I'm glad it's good weather, as some of us were discussing before. And thank you for those who put it on. My name is Annette Watson. So when you go to vote for me, my initials are A and W, like the root beer. So at least you can remember that much when you walk into the voting booth. But I've lived in Morris for six years. I've been married to the same man for 19 years in a row and have birthed five children. So politically speaking, that means I have the ability to keep a promise for 19 years and live with the consequences. When I look at city council, I think of it as a service to the town. So in the past, when I talk about things I've done that's service, I've served in my local church. I have served in Minnesota Reading Corps, teaching children in elementary school how to read. So I can read off a political teleprompter if necessary. And then I also have been a board member of Someplace Safe, which is a crime victim advocacy group here in town and actually serves nine different counties throughout greater Minnesota. And they deserve all of the credit for the good work that they do. So 2020 changed me. It changed the direction of my family. My husband, after 2020, joined the Air Force Reserve and currently he is deployed. So that is why he is not here tonight. And it changed me because I started studying doctorally in the degree of law and policy. And so I want to use the things that I've learned in law and policy in order to serve you guys if so you desire to elect me. And I want us to be prosperous and live our American dream, whatever that may be, in Morris, Minnesota.
My name is Zach Crails. I first came to Morris in 2010. I attended college four years consecutively. I graduated in 2014. After 2014, my wife and I moved to the cities for a brief, let's call it a sabbatical. Spent a couple of years down there. After the birth of our first child, we moved back to Morris because it is a really good place to raise a family. We've been living here for eight years, little over eight years. We have three wonderful, wonderful children. I worked at Superior Westmore in town. I ran for mayor in 2020. I obviously did not win that, which is okay. But after that seat was vacated, I was appointed to city council.
Thank you, candidates. Our next question, could you describe your general platform and what you would seek to do if elected to the city council?
I would say something that I feel is really important as a platform is drawing people to Morris to visit, to live, to work, to play. Because if you come here for any number of those things, you might decide to stay. History shows us that there are some pretty interesting things that draw people to a place and then they eventually stay. So I think marketing our city and our area well to draw people here, encourage business, encourage industry, because it all encourages growth, is probably the most important thing that I would like to see happen. And I would also like us to find like populated cities to kind of pair ideas with, maybe draw some creative ideas from other Minnesota cities that are approximately our size.
So the question is the platform. So I believe the American dream is not dead. And I think that the American dream can be available to anyone who resides in Morris, Minnesota. So if you go back, you can go back to the table and grab literature and think of questions for me. But my three points that I talk to people about are American prosperity, fiscal conservatism, and then just for your information, I have a Christian ethic on policies. So the second part of the question is, what would you do? So when it comes to American prosperity, what that means is that when something comes up in town and we're faced with spending money, not spending money, acting or not acting, that I'll ask, is this for in the best interest of the people in town? And if it's not in your best interest, then I don't want you to go forward. The other part of fiscal conservatism kind of talks to the way that I would treat the finances. I have sat on some, sat and listened to some council meetings. And I very rarely hear, if ever, and maybe it's in their packets, they don't have to ask, how much does this cost? Like, what's the bottom line? And I would be wondering, how much does it cost? What fund is it coming from? Perhaps they already know that, but I don't see showing it to the people who are sitting in the room. So that would be the fiscal conservatism. And the last one is just informative. It's just saying that I have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ, and that's going to flow out in my decisions that I make in town. So those Christian ethics that are be kind to one another, make sure that you're not respecting one person more than another and you're acting with integrity. That that would be a part of my platform, a part of who I am and what I make decisions. And so if you want to have American prosperity, please vote Watson. Thank you.
I think that the strides that we've made in the past couple of years have been good on city council. I think the overall communication, the transparency, the level of representation has been very good. And I'd like to continue to see those strides made and upheld. Now, when it comes to policy, the three areas that I'd like to see continue to improve, one of them is housing, which I'll get into in one of the later questions. The next one would be civil infrastructure. City does a lot of roadwork, lots of water and sewer. That's something that we need to continue to maintain, our civic, civil infrastructure, excuse me. And then finally, as a father of three young children, my kids love being outside. I want to see, I want to see green space. I want to see improvements to that green space and expansion upon that green space.
Thank you, candidates. Your next question is, what do you view as the biggest issue the city of Morris faces, and how should the city council address it?
Like what was already mentioned, I think housing is, seems to be an issue. And it sounds like the city and the county are already kind of starting to collaborate a little bit on different ways that perhaps can be addressed. Daycare is an issue, and the county is addressing that. But I think the city can definitely be supportive of that. And I don't know if this falls in infrastructure, but like just upkeeping and paying attention to our sidewalks. And there's some, there's some pretty interesting sidewalks on the west side of Morris anyway, where I live. So things like that, just keeping that up, making our main street look attractive and beautiful. I think all of those are issues. How can we address it? I think item per item, I think there's a lot of creative ideas that can be, can be addressed for each of those.
So the question is, what do you see as the biggest problem in Moore City? And I'm going to just narrow it down to Morris City Council. If you'd asked me a few weeks ago, I would have said that I thought that the biggest problem in Morris City Council is the abdication of duty. But I'm not going to talk about tonight. You can ask a question later if you want. But I have knocked on people's doors, asking them to vote for me. And I'll ask them, you know, like, what do you think is the problem in Minnesota, in Morris, Minnesota? And without question, maybe just like one person or two, or defer into something else, they will say it is trees. Trees are the biggest issue and foliage in Morris, Minnesota. And there is bad feelings on people saying, calling the town and saying, hey, my tree is dying. Could you take out this dead tree? And then they'll come and they'll take out the live tree and leave the dead tree, and this dead tree's still there. Phone calls from people saying, I said that this tree should be taken out because its roots are popping up and it's going to pop up the house of my neighbor. You should take it out. And then it's still there. We have people who planted trees and told the town, I'm planting my tree. And then they use it to practice for their arborist, like how to trim a tree. And then they killed that little tree that the person planted two years later. Like, people are very angry about their trees. And so it is my opinion that if indeed the incumbents do lose this year, it will be something that you never expected. And that is, people are angry about their property and they're angry about their trees. So how would I solve this problem? Before we move on doing an upgrade to an area, we need to tell them, hey, we're going to take this tree out if they call. We make sure that we're taking the tree that they're talking about. And then if we disagree and arborists disagree, how much tree should be taken out, that we actually address that with them on what is going on. But the communication lines are down between people and their property. And even like where their mailboxes are attached to the tree, not attached to the tree, this is a big issue to the people living here.
Like I mentioned before, the biggest obstacle, biggest challenge that the city of Morris is facing presently is housing. We have a lot of housing needs, not only in the city, but in the county as well. And the city has been working, starting to work with the county. Some of that requires the city to update some of our ordinances, which we will be looking at in 2025. But additionally, we do need to not only look at housing, but what does that mean for jobs? Because when you bring people to town, you need a place to work. Working at Superior Westmore, there are 47 jobs available today, meaning that one of the largest employers in town has openings. With those openings, you're going to need childcare, which the county does a good job putting in the pods. But with the housing will come in-home daycare. Between the pods and the childcare center, we're going to need more additional daycare. So those are the, those are the three areas that I feel strongly about that is the biggest challenge facing Morris at the present time.
Thank you, candidates. In light of the fact that we're moving pretty quickly through our list of six questions, we decided to give you all more time. So before you had one to two minutes, now please feel free to take two to three minutes to answer each question and give a more fulsome response. With that in mind, the next question is, running a business in a town as small as Morris can be difficult. In your view, what are the barriers businesses face in Morris? And how do you think the city council can help ease the conditions for business in Morris?
I've had experience with this recently. Before I found a location for my new business, I went through about three or four other possibilities of locations. So I think the number one issue is finding the spot, finding the location, or the building, or the space that you need. I ran into a zoning problem. There, one of the places that I wanted that's zoned commercial, decided to put in apartments, which makes it residential. And another one, the zoning just was an issue. We'll just leave it at that. So I think making it easier when somebody wants to start a business, just making it, working with the person, working with the city, working with the zoning, to encourage more businesses, to encourage someone to live their American dream, is definitely something that the city can improve on. And the way it sounds, there are some businesses that have decided to move elsewhere because the sewer and the water didn't reach the area that they wanted to start a business. So it went elsewhere. One of them I heard about today was wanting to come to Morris and ended up in Wisconsin because the sewer and water didn't reach where they wanted to go. And sounded like it wasn't going to happen, so they left. So I think looking at all of those things for businesses, and if we want to grow and expand and encourage, encourage people to come here and start a business, whatever, whatever can be done to support them and encourage them.
Thank you, Cam. So since we have a few more minutes, I'll ask you a hypothetical. So let's pretend that we are in, oh, Washington DC. And we have a group of lobbyists, it's a hypothetical question, a group of lobbyists approach the Congress or congressmen. And they say, hey, this is our business. We're a big business. And we think that you should write the rules this way in favor of us so that we can do our business. And then the result of that would be smaller businesses cannot get in the area. Do you think this is a good idea? Or do you think it's a bad idea? If you're with me and you think it is a bad idea, then I would contest some of the decisions made or talked about on the current city council. So now, if you agreed with me that protectionism, that's what it's called, is bad, then this is the actual thing that they're talking about in Moore City Council. So here it goes. Taco John's. So we all, you know, love Taco John's. And the mayor especially loves Taco John's because he used to own the building. But Taco John's called the city and said, there is a food truck that is parked within line of sight to the Taco John's. And they called and they had the police come out to talk to the Taco Food Truck. And they said, Taco Food Truck, do you have your licenses in order? Yes. Do you have permission to be on this land if the owner let you? Yes. Everything was legal. They were asked to move and they had to leave that spot. This is called protectionism. When it was coming before the city council, I'm hearing tell of it. And the, and the question that they have is, what can we do to keep people away from businesses that have food? Or to keep the food trucks far enough away so people are happy? So this is the result of protectionism. Protectionism results in the consumer doesn't have enough choices, or they're limited in their choices. It results in the consumer maybe having to pay a higher price because now you've instilled another bill on that person. Like maybe you have to pay, spend a licensee fee to be able to be in town on certain days, to make it harder for them. Which was, you know, part of the discussion is how do we make it harder for them? And then the last one is eventually if we keep this up in town, if they proceed to do what they were talking about doing with the Taco Truck, that we will be isolationist. And those businesses that are here are just going to be the ones that are here. We're not going to have other people participating. So if you are in favor of the Taco Truck, vote Watson.
I can't speak to owning or starting a small business as well as Cam can. I haven't done that in my life. What I can speak to is a little bit of the mindset of the consumer. And some of the mindset that has changed over the past 20, 30, 40 years. And a lot of that boils down to the speed of distribution centers. So some people will go to Alexandria, go to Wilmer, go wherever they go, up to Fergus because there's a Walmart, there's a Target, we can get it same day. It may not be carried in one of the stores in town, or they'll order it on Amazon. It'll be here in two, three days, two weeks. That shifting mindset has occurred over the past 20, 30, 40 years, where people would come in once, twice a week, shop local, shop small business, whatever they could. I think that that's a major issue in business ownership presently. I also think that small businesses are second, third, fourth on the distribution chain, which also makes it extremely difficult to keep competitive pricing in the marketplace. Now, because I can't necessarily speak to owning a small business, starting a small business, I will speak to one of the services offered in town, and that is the Stevens County Economic Improvement Commission. What they do is they partner with small businesses to offer something like gap financing or help coach prospective business owners on, on how to run a business, where to go, site selection, things like that, that can potentially give them the leg up and what hiring and firing looks like. As far as the city, the city has given funding to SCEIC in the past, which has been used for different funds out to small businesses in the past.
Thank you, candidates. Your next question has a couple of parts here. What do you view as the ideal relationship between the city of Morris and the University of Minnesota Morris? What are some challenges to this relationship? And how do you think the city council can help alleviate these? What are some opportunities that can be taken advantage of?
Well, I think that the ideal relationship between a large business, like the University of Minnesota Morris and the city, is to just keep the line of communication between, going back and forth, being collaborative, being supportive, encouraging, encouraging people from the community to go to the university for the plays and the sporting events and programming so that the university sees the community, the community sees the university. Likewise, it's great to see university students out on Main Street shopping in the businesses or participating in, in the small businesses in town of the university that they attend. So I think just a healthy back and forth. I know there's a welcome picnic in August, which I think is great. And I had a booth there a year, or not this year, but the year before. It seemed very well attended, had some great conversation with college students. So I think that's, things like that, just promote some good communication between the two.
So I thought about this question, I looked at this question, and I feel like that maybe the students who wrote it have something specific in mind. But I don't know what that specific thing is. So if you think about it later, you want to ask it in the question time, tell me what that is. So I think that I might know what you were getting at if I were sitting on the council already. Or if I was like an employee of U of M, I might be able to guess what you were thinking of. But when I look at the relationship of Morris, Minnesota and the U of M, Minnesota, Morris, Minnesota, I, I see a good working relationship, like tonight. You guys all came out, so I do see that. And I see the economic benefit that is brought to our town. And not only that, when we, when you guys, Morris, the U of M, you guys do have your sports events. You do have those fine art events that we're talking, talked about. And then I think there is like a youth challenge initiative that you guys do, that you're getting other students from other places to come visit in Morris, Minnesota. And I see you guys serve our community. So it's not just monetary. I see you guys being engaged in civic duty. I see you go and do the community meals, you know, like the bread bowls. I see you working at the food shelf, you know, and doing food drives. And I see that you are engaged with our youths and like in different like 4H programs. And in the, at the end of the day, like you're even giving things. So I was mentioning it to someone before in the room. But just a group from the, from the U of M decided to make some art barn quilts and hand it out to the nonprofits in town. And that is like a, like a little, like a gift that's tangible that the U of M is giving to the, to the city. So in those respects I've talked about, it seems like we have a really good relationship. And as your representative on the council, I would want to keep that relationship with Morris, Minnesota going strong. And I think that just as Cam was kind of alluding to, it's individuals talking to individuals so that we have that open line of communication. Thank you.
I spent four years at the college. I have a direct idea of what it is to be both a student at the college as well as a private citizen in town. The college isn't going anywhere. The town isn't going anywhere. And that's a good thing, right? It's a symbiotic relationship between the town and the university. There's a lot of students such as myself that worked through all four years of college in some of the businesses in town. That's great. I did all my shopping in town, partially because I didn't have a car and I couldn't go home to visit my parents. But that's, that's part of the relationship that goes on from a city level. A couple of things would be to have a joint city and university calendar, right? All the events that we've been talking about, hosting them on, on the city website to help encourage individuals in, in town that may not be attending university to show up to some of the sporting events, or the choir concerts, or the play. Another thing Mayor Wallace has suggested, and I'm firmly in support of, is we hold a meeting once a year at the high school. I'm in favor of holding a meeting, a city council meeting at the university. And finally, one thing that, close to two years ago, former city manager Hill, Mayor Wallace and myself, sat down with NCSA leadership at the time. And one thing that we proposed to them was coming to city council and discussing, you know, highlighting, maybe it's once a month, once every other month, what's going on on campus. Fully in support of that during citizen comments. You can highlight the, the play that's going on, or the choir concert, the Jazz Fest, things of that nature. And that's something that hasn't happened, but I firmly believe that that would be good PR for the university.
Thank you, candidates. Our final question. Morris has a high population of Spanish-speaking immigrants from Latin America. Do you think the city council should take more action to support these members of our community? And if so, what action would you want to take? And how would you begin to accomplish this?
I think we have a really good organization in place called Conexiones. And I think it might be a great idea if there was a designee on the city council to work directly, or, you know, just kind of touch base with Summer, who is the director of Conexiones, last I knew anyway. Just touch base, keep the communication line going. And then that person can be the liaison between Conexiones and the city council. And I think that would be a great way to find out firsthand, like what, what needs there might be, or what they might need to support from the city council.
So I'm a researcher at heart and I like asking questions. So when I saw this question, I wanted to go do some footwork. So what I did is I went to and talked with the pastor of Evangelical Free, because they have a Spanish-speaking ministry. And then I talked with the priest over at the Catholic Church, because they also have a Spanish-speaking ministry. And I asked them both these questions that are here. Is there something that's lacking that the city could do for these people that we're not doing, and how would we accomplish it? And they gave me the same answer that I initially had in my head. And that is, I think our town's doing a pretty good job with the Spanish-speaking individuals. What's, what's interesting to me is what they focused on. These people were focusing on transit. Because we have our transit line, the Spanish-speaking people can get from one place to another. And they praised our transit, which again, I wouldn't have thought of unless I had spoken with them. We also have, you know, Conexiones. We have different parties for Spanish-speaking groups in our town, not necessarily the town running them. And we also are able to give them a library. There's no one who is Spanish-speaking that is barred from our library and able to get books of whatever they choose. They just have to fill out a form. They are able to go to the emergency room and get emergency care if they need. They are able to, as far as I know, I've never heard any problems of like, I can't rent because I'm Spanish-speaking. I can't do, I can't go to this business because I'm Spanish-speaking. So in that case, I don't see anything that has restricted them for being Spanish-speaking, or someone being Russian-speaking, or Cantonese-speaking, or Taiwanese-speaking. But I think that the things that are offered for Spanish-speaking talent are actually really hot. But I think that the things that are offered for Spanish-speaking talent are actually really high. So I talked with these two and I asked them if there was anything in particular that we could do to be better at it, and they had nothing. The only thing that I can personally think of is if we went to the library board. So the library does movies in the park. And I've lived here for six years, and I don't recall them doing a Spanish one in town. Like it might have, like a year ago, like they might have done like a Despicable Me in Spanish, but I don't really recall for sure if that's what was going on. But we could ask them, hey, why don't you try a Spanish-speaking one? And then it's up to them, that's their jurisdiction, to decide if it's working out well to should continue with Spanish-speaking movies in the park. So I'm open and open to making sure that people feel welcome in our town, that we are meeting the needs of those that speak a different language. But I don't think there's anything that we have denied them. And I, as far as I know, that they are happy with the things that our town has to give up.
The other candidates hit on the positives, right? And that's, and so I'm not gonna, not gonna further belay the point here. Because the city does a very good job of supporting the population. The one thing that I do want to point out or encourage is that if someone does feel underserved, if someone feels like they have a question or one clarification on something, come talk to the mayor, come talk to city council, come talk to city staff, wherever you feel comfortable talking to. That's the most important part, because maybe there's a reason behind a decision or something we're talking about. Maybe there's, maybe there's a legal reason why we have to do things a certain way. Come and, come and talk, and if we don't know the answer, we'll be the first ones to tell you we don't know, but we'll get you the information. The next thing that I would say is those that can, vote and run. You have three candidates up here tonight, a fourth one was unable to attend tonight, but, but representation is one of the most important things, getting your voice heard, going out and making your decision known. And then finally, the city council does have subsidiary boards, like the library board, like the tree board, the park board. If, if an individual does feel extremely passionate about, about a topic or a subject, go to those boards and, and speak with them. But additionally, you can get involved with them, you can be a member of the board. Private citizens can be a member of those boards. So if you feel extremely passionate about a certain topic, try and get on one of those boards.
Thank you, candidates, for your very thoughtful responses to each of our questions. We will now move on to our audience Q and A session. So if you do have a question, please raise your hand and we will bring you the microphone.
Can you guys just say your names one more time?
Sure. Annette Watson, or you can remember A and W Root Beer when you're at your palate. Cam Erickson.
Zach Crails.
Thank you. And then I have a question. What are you going to be doing to promote sustainability with like the Morris model?
So within the last six months, our sustainability coordinator took a different position. We are actively hiring for that. And so with that individual comes different programs that they spearhead in order to help sustain the sustainability model. The Morris model was actually given a grant, I believe it was $200,000, which is going towards a lot of that funding for different projects.
Yeah, so what Zach's talking about, I read about, like, I don't remember where, but I read about it on the internet and about the grant and all that. Do I know tons about that information? No. So I don't have an answer on what was specifically done with sustainability, but I'm really proud of the work that was done and the work to get that grant, because somebody must have written awesome paper, you know?
Having written a few grants, grants are, it's a challenge to write a grant. So anytime somebody writes a grant and we get it, hallelujah, because it's, it's a difficult thing to do. So that's awesome that we're able to have that. And I guess as a city council member, I will just, as projects come up, I will be eager to hear the plan and try to help come up with a creative solution for, for that model.
Thank you.
Continuing along the same idea. I, in having listened to some of the projects that the Morris model has done, the question that comes to the back of my mind is, how much is this costing this city? And is this diverting funds from basic maintenance? Anyone want to speak to that?
So I'll speak to that. I agree with your concern. Like I said, I did not actually read the proposal. But when I sit in city council, as I said before, I hear them talk about things, but I don't have, ask, hear them say, how much does it cost and which fund is it coming from? Which is, like I said, I don't know if it's in their packet, like on their computer, and I can't see it. But those questions would be occurring to me at the same time, because at the end of the day, I don't want the people in Minnesota, and Morris, Minnesota, to become poorer. One of like the things that people have talked about when I walk around town is when they have special assessments, they just cannot afford it right now. So if we're gonna do some project, it has to be affordable to the people in town right now, where they are in their finances. And so we need to talk to the people that it's going to affect their bottom line when they make a decision.
So a lot of what the sustainability coordinator does is look for and search out grants for a lot of these projects. And a lot of them are, the city may have a slight down payment on something, which is fully reimbursed through these grants. So that's a lot of what, what happens with, with those. Additionally, the city does run a balanced budget. So if we know that it's gonna be a longer-term project, what we'll do is we'll put funds into the coming year, knowing that we need to do said project moving forward in whatever calendar year is upcoming.
One of the city council meetings that I was at, it was, the topic was an electric bus. And at first, I was a little concerned about that. I was like, is that the most important thing we have, that we need right now? So I understand what a lot of people might be thinking. But like Zach was mentioning, when you write a grant, those grants are earmarked, they're for specific things. I guess what I would like to know, if I am elected to city council, is, are there, can we spend our time writing other grants for other things also? So I understand your question there.
Hi, I like cats. What can the City of Morris do to address the feral and breeding cat situation in Morris? And I suppose all Stevens County.
I have never even thought of that question before. Thank you for being here tonight. If you guys didn't hear, it was about feral cats in, in town. So I do not have an answer for you. I would have to go and do some research on where they were at, why they were feral, you know, how to stop them. The last thing that I heard was somebody wanted to give away two cats that were fixed, but that was, you know, online, trying to get rid of them in town. So I haven't heard the feral cat one yet, so I would have to look into that.
The Humane Society does a lot of work in town, the Stevens County Humane Society does a lot of work in, not only in Morris, but in the county as a whole, trying to address some of the feral animal problems. So they do Eastside Park, for example. They've, they've done a catch, fix, and release type of program there. Now, obviously, they are, they are a society. So funding is, is gonna be one of their biggest items. They approached city council and we made the request of them to let us know what we can do to put something in their budget, and we haven't heard anything as a council on that. Absolutely willing to help support.
I think it was just in the paper this last week that Alberta is also having this issue. Having grown up on a farm, this is an interesting situation. If you grow up in the seventies on a farm, there's only one way to take care of that, but I know that that is really not how we take care of things citywide in 2024. So I think there's definitely, a council should look at, how much money are you willing to, to put into this issue? Because there is also, the Humane Society, if I'm not mistaken, would need to be reimbursed for their, for their things that cost them money. So it's definitely, it's definitely a sticky issue with just how everybody views all the things that are around that issue.
So outside of a couple of smaller cities like Alexandria, most of west central Minnesota is either stagnant in population or shrinking, particularly in rural areas. Morris has largely kept its population, although it is down a little bit from past decades. And so my question to you, thinking about the future of the city, is would you prefer, say in ten years, if you were put on the council, your goal in ten years to see Morris roughly at what it's at? Or growing, not necessarily doubling or tripling in population like the Alexandria area is, but growing, meaning, you know, new businesses and more people and new development? So what is, what is your sort of future of Morris look like? Similar in size, or would you prefer to see actual growth?
So the City of Morris on the map is in a certain area, but I think in general, I do want to see it growing. There are still some parts of Morris that are not developed, that I think that we could develop more. And even if we did some industries outside of town, again, we're talking for housing inside of Morris, being able to house people who are working outside of town. So I'm in favor of it growing. And since our ten years, four years, I, growing in four years.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of growth potential for Morris. Now with that comes annexation, and with that comes housing, right? We've talked about housing, all three of us have talked about housing. Annexation, in order to acquire, to increase land mass of Morris, is what would have to happen to accommodate some of that, if we're talking 5%, 10% increase for, for population size. And, but overall, I'd like to see Morris grow. I'd like to see Morris develop, I'd like to see new businesses come to town. I don't, I don't think anyone wouldn't, right? And so, so to answer your question, I'd like to see Morris grow, but it takes time, right? And it takes a very poignant effort. If you look at populations in the area, most of them are shrinking, with the exception of Hancock. Hancock's growing. And they, we have more industry in Morris, and a lot of individuals that work at some of the largest employers, such as the university, the hospital, Riverview, Superior Westmark, commute from different areas. So not only does that increasing the population look like bringing some of those individuals to Morris, but it, it looks like expansion in some of the overall industry in town.
I would also, I would also like to see growth in Morris. But with that, it needs to be done in a balanced way. So if you all of a sudden have a, an industry boom, there's gonna be a squeeze on some other problems. So it's just a matter of like encouraging new business, encouraging people to move here, but then also alleviating some of the other issues we've talked about, like housing, daycare, things like that, in a balanced way, so that it's not all happening in a lopsided, painful kind of manner.
A while ago, I read on Facebook about someone who had gone swimming in Lake Crystal. And as somebody who grew up here, I just about cringed and really hope that person is healthy. Is there any move to make Lake Crystal more recreation-friendly? I think the park over there is beautiful and a wonderful addition compared to when I was a kid. But wondering if there's a way to clean up the lake, or if there's been any move to do anything about that, or could be a move to clean it up.
I'm for making it recreational as well and being cleaner. But I think the person who can best answer this is probably Zach.
I feel sorry for whoever went swimming in Lake Crystal. Being an outdoorsman myself, I like hunting, I like fishing, I like being outside, I like riding my bike. I live on the west side of town, relatively close to Lake Crystal. I'd like to see it cleaned up, but the financial implication of doing that, I don't think that the city could realistically undertake that without some serious long-term planning. Not that it couldn't be done, but it would take some serious long-term planning to accomplish.
Now, even without cleaning it up, there used to be a lot of activity on the ice of Lake Crystal. There's some awesome pictures at the museum of the sail boats that used to take place in the wintertime, which sounds a little strange, but that's exactly what they were, were boats with sails. And they'd line them up, and then on a windy day, they'd clear off the snow and they'd scoot across the ice. And so I would say, even without cleaning up Lake Crystal, it could definitely be used in the winter.
A different question. Relatively recently, Morris became a contract city, at least as far as law enforcement. Having grown up in a contract city, I saw a lot more interaction between the sheriff's department, for instance, and the city council, with at least semi-monthly reports, so two or three reports a month. And those reports allowed the city council to give direction to enforcement efforts on the part of the sheriff's department. I haven't heard of anything like that going on in Morris. What are your thoughts on that idea?
I haven't heard anything on that idea either. We have a town charter that's 750-plus pages long. I have set my eyes on it, I have not finished it yet. One section on law enforcement has been removed, one section on law enforcement remains. And I think that the town charter itself should be updated. And you're saying like with rules and it's to know how we relate to the county. And in my reading, it has not come across that we have updated that section to reflect how in the world we relate to the sheriff's department. So I would be interested in doing the fine details of that on your behalf.
What Annette's talking about is codification, and that's something that we do have on the docket as the city council, to look at the charter as a whole. With the upcoming appointment of the city charter commission, that is part of their role, is to look at the charter as a whole and make recommendations to the city as far as what should be modified, languages, or if things need to be updated or removed. Yes, I see the bug too, super distracting. To your point, to your point, the sheriff has, Sheriff Damian has come to council once in my two years and presented very, it's typically annually. The city does have a contract with the county on hours of coverage. I'd totally be in favor of them coming more often. Gives us more exposure to what's actually going on and what we're seeing.
Anytime there's more communication between two organizations, it's always positive. So I would totally be in favor of that, for sure.
So if you look at the University of Minnesota's admission rate from the past 10 years, there's been a pretty significant, consistent decline in admissions. And we've gone down roughly 500 people in the last 10 years. I'm wondering on city council, and I know this is hard to answer since we have a lot of students in the room, but I hope you'd be as honest as possible. Would you, is it a priority for you to make the town more appealing for students in order to, you know, help raise that admissions rate? I know a lot of that has to do with the university and what they do for admissions. However, as a city council member, would you make it a priority to make Morris, Minnesota, a place where students want to go?
What do you think would make it more appealing? What do you feel is missing?
Well, obviously, I don't like work directly with admissions, but I, I know the numbers and I know what students say around me. And a lot of it is that a lot of prospective students are from larger metropolitan areas, who then, when they decide to go to a smaller town, you know, they're usually looking for more amenities and things. Like we've been talking about, where like more businesses like go outside the town, or go outside the campus and like do things in town, you know, kind of more recreational things, also just aesthetic, aesthetic factors, like Main Street and things like that. I know this is a very open-ended question, but if you have in mind anything that you want to improve to make the town more appealing to young people, I would, I'm just curious about that.
So even, even if it was a top priority, there's no way to force people to start a business or have a business? Or there has to be like the right person that has the right idea, that has a vision? So obviously, we are not going to compete with the metro area. It is, you know, we're not going to have five theaters to choose from? Or, I don't know, I think we have a lot of eating places for a town our size. We have a lot of, we have a lot of positive things. A lot more of certain amenities than other towns that have 50, 100 people in them. So I think everyone would like to see the town grow and have more business and not only for you, but for everyone. And it's something that can't be necessarily forced. It's kind of has to happen naturally. But if you would like to start a business here after you graduate, that'd be awesome. Stick around and open a business.
I think my answer is going to be on a different line. I see the U of M and Morris having like a simpatico relationship. And I think that the U of M has more money than, than the city of Morris. So we are dependent and we love you. As students, just like I was saying, like praising you guys are doing the civic things that like the, the people here are not necessarily raising their hand and doing. That, that we are desirous of you to come to our city because we need your money. And as for beautifying, I'd like to praise the mayor. He was talking about trying to find a Christmas tree or planting a beautiful Christmas tree in town so that you at least bring Christmas, that feeling back to Morris, Minnesota. So they really are discussing these things currently on what to do to even make, you know, the Main Street, Atlantic Avenue look more beautiful and appealing to people who pass through town. But again, I think it's a simpatico relationship where we are dependent on you. We're sorry, you guys don't have more students. And again, I do like what Cam said. If you think of something, please tell the town, city what you're thinking because it will at least pass it through our thoughts. And like I said, my snuff test is, is it in our jurisdiction? And do we have the finances for it? And does it, does it make us more wealthy as a people? And if those three items are passed, then that idea, I mean, it's good to go.
The issue you're talking about has been happening for a long time. When, so I was an incoming freshman in 2010. And what you're talking about is culture shock, right? Coming from a larger city, larger community, from the Twin Cities out here, where stuff closes by 10 o'clock. That's, that's, that's been going on for years, a number of, a number of years. And there's not, to, to the point before, we can't force a business to do anything. We can't force longer hours or different hours. That's, that's up to the ownership to do. And this, what you're talking about really goes back to what I talked about earlier. Let us know. Give us an idea. Give city council an idea. City staff, the mayor, whoever you feel comfortable talking to. If you think, hey, I want to have a festival that, that will, that will be super awesome, right? The, the metal arts festival that we had at Eastside Park a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago at this point, I took my kids out there. We had live music in the band show. Walked around. That was, that was something that we brought individuals to town from different communities, but I saw a lot of college students out there as well. So a lot of, if, if, if individuals have an idea, come to city council and, and voice your opinion, voice your, voice your idea. And maybe we can do it. Maybe we can help be, be, be good stewards and spearhead that idea for you. Or maybe we can redirect you to where that idea can actually go to function.
I was curious whether you guys are more interested in attracting kind of large businesses, like your McDonald's and Dairy Queens or even like larger stores like Walmart and that sort of thing? Or encouraging small businesses? Or even if that's like in the purview of city council?
It's not necessarily in the purview of city council. We can, we can, when, when a lot, when a business wants to come to town, one of the things that, that we do is look at the zoning of the town and give recommendations. Or maybe there's an open space that something can build. But there's a lot of, on some of the major retailers, there's, there's large population and geographic areas that affect whether, like a Walmart were to come to town. Distance between stores and then population size and foot traffic that affect a lot of that. I'm, I'm, I'm a proponent of, of small business because that directly affects the overall bottom line of the, of the local economy. If a larger retailer were to come to town, we'd have to look at where that would go and how that would affect some of the smaller employers in town, small businesses in town, because that, that directly affects as far as competition, how that goes. Not saying that they can't come in, not saying that anyone can't come in, but we'd have to look at overall, overall financial implications.
I'm for a free market. So that means if somebody shows up, I'm interested in listening to what they would want to do with their business in the community. I'm not going to say no to somebody who comes in with a big business or a small business. If I were just in my head dreaming, I would want to see our mall actually staffed and have like people in every business in the mall. If you go to the mall, it seems kind of dead. Sorry, guys. But, but yes, I, I would be in favor of any business that wants to start in town, that they would be able to do so. And again, in the free market, if they, if the people want it, it will succeed. And if the people don't, then they have a learning experience and can try again. So that would be my quick answer.
Being a small business owner, I love small businesses. That's the backbone of our communities. But everyone has a different, different definition of small, medium, and large businesses. And I think a combination is always good. And I think each one has its place. Each one has positives and negatives that go along with it. And I think no matter what the business is, even if it overlaps a little, it creates healthy competition and everyone benefits from that.
Hi, so I know that there's a handful of businesses that did recently open in town, such as Pan's or Bridget Fantastic. But a lot of people that I've talked to, like, had no idea that those businesses existed, that they're opening. They can't find them on Google Maps, which is what the primary thing that college students use to like go out and try to find businesses. So I was just wondering what your thoughts on how to promote the businesses that we do have on, that we do have in town, so that people on campus and in town can actually be able to patron those businesses? Because I think if people knew they existed, they'd be a lot more interested in patroning them.
Last time I had a group of guests in my store from the university, I asked them about that. I said, do you guys look at the bulletin boards on campus? And two of them said, um, sometimes. And one's like, no, not really. I said, well, how do you think the best way to get the word out on what's available in town is for? You know, there's a Facebook page. Other than posters around campus. Obviously, nobody can be forced to look at the bulletin board. But my plan is to get some posters up there on campus. I just haven't done that yet. But also, it takes a little bit to get organized, to get on Google search. I am working with someone who said they were going to help me do that. And it just takes a little time. Bridget Fantastic's only been open for like five weeks. I've only been open three weeks. So it just takes a little, a little time to get all that, all the ducks in the row.
So I would consider this a question that the jurisdiction doesn't reside with the city council, which we're doing right now. But I forgot its name. I'm going to call it the Commerce Club or whatever. You probably know what it's called. But there's like Commerce Club in town where business owners get together and they talk. Those are the people who would want to decide how to advertise themselves in town and who are their sphere. Chamber of Commerce, thank you, Commerce Club. That they would be the people who would answer that question better than the city council.
That's what I was going to hammer home. It'll be Chamber of Commerce. As far as business owners, like Cam mentioned getting on, on Google search. The other thing would be social media, getting that out there on, on different channels.
Head P, well, we're talking about technology. 16 years ago, my part of town was added to the city in an annexation. And our street is still, has the wrong name on Google Maps. Is the city responsible for that?
I don't actively know. I told you, I tell you when I don't know. I don't know whether that's, that's city or that's Google-based or not.
208th is still labeled as County Road 21.
And I can tell you that when I type in my address on Google search, they bring me about six houses north of where I actually am. I can't, I can't tell you whether that's city or county. Or, sorry, city or Google.
Yeah, we'll just blame Big Tech.
Another question. Somebody of you talked about the importance of parks. Those of us who use the bike path at Plumterter Park, which is a city park, note that it's in very bad condition and gets worse rapidly. What do you, what thoughts do you have on fixing that?
It has just been brought to my attention that there is a problem with the city parks. So again, it would go through the test. Is it our jurisdiction? Yes. Do we have the finances for it this year? And if the answer is yes, then we go ahead and we fix that because it benefits the community for your American dream.
I use the bike trail quite a bit. I, I ride bike out there. My in-laws live close. I walk and take walks out there. We're going to give it a minute. One of the things that the city's talked about and I believe is on the books for 2025 is a mill and overlay project for parts of the bike path to resurface that. Additionally, we as a city are looking at larger funding to redo the entirety of the bike path.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in the audience Q and A. We're going to give each of the candidates one chance to have some closing remarks. And then we'll open it up to just an open mingling session. So if you guys want to head out, I know it's getting close to bedtime, especially for me. You can head out. Otherwise, feel free to stay by. Talk to the candidates after the fact. Talk to some of us students. You're more than welcome to hang out. We have the room until nine, but since we're doing good on time, let's say wrap things up around 8:30. But before that, we'll give the candidates a chance for closing remarks. And in that theme, I'm going to go close the door.
So again, my name's Annette Watson. Voting date is November 5. And you can go ahead and check my mark when you decide to vote. I'll be standing in the back by my table if you want to ask me a question. But indeed, I would like to serve Morris, Minnesota, and be able to make sure that when we are making decisions, we're doing it in your best interest. Thank you.
My name's Zach Crails. I've sat on city council for two years now. The work isn't completed. We have things that we need to continue to do, areas of emphasis that we need to continue to expand upon. I would, I would very much enjoy a vote from those, not only in the audience tonight, but from those that are going to watch in the future in order to continue the work that we're doing. There's a lot of areas, such as housing, civil infrastructure, green spaces, that, that we can continue to improve upon. And I would like to continue that work for my children upcoming.
I enjoy being a citizen, part of the community here in Morris, as I know so many people do. And I would like to continue working with the rest of the city council to move Morris forward, to complete projects and beautifying our city, making it a fun and wonderful place to live, work, and play, to do business, to shop, to attend events, community meals, all the things that we do and all the things that we have to offer to everyone. And I would appreciate your vote to work with the city, our mayor, our city manager, to come up with creative ideas and to continue what, the wonderful work that's already been done and to just continue to make Morris a great place to live.
Thank you, candidates, for your great closing remarks as well as your excellent answers throughout the entire night. Please give the candidates a round of applause. And that's all, folks. So feel free to mingle with the candidates or head out. Thank you again for coming tonight.